For the pleasure of allegiance.
My pleasure allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you, you may be seated. Welcome in everyone, just remember, please silence your cell phones. Item number one on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and I will move that.
Second.
All right, motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero. Next up is the consent agenda, items two through seven constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item two is approval of minutes on the September ninth, two thousand twenty-five meeting. Number three is approval of the claims. Number four from Board Administration, Karen James, approval of resolution for a tax suspension for initials A B. Item five from Human Resources, Melissa Thomas, is the approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions. And B is the authorization to initiate the hiring process. Item six from County Treasurer, Tina Bertrand, it's approval of property tax refund on partial ending in six zero four one in the amount of two thousand seven hundred nineteen dollars and zero cents. Item seven for planning zoning, Daniel Priestley. Item A is the approval to schedule October seventh at four forty P M, October fourteenth at four forty P M, and October twenty-first at four forty P M for three public hearings on a proposed zoning ordinance map amendment, rezon of six point seven five acres located on partial ending in zero 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 four, section four, T A eight N, R forty-six W Floyd Township, from agricultural preservation to agricultural state zoning district. Item B is approval to schedule October seventh at four forty-two P M, October fourteenth at four forty-two P M, and October twenty-first at four forty-two P M for three public hearings for zoning ordinance text amendments to the Woodbury County zoning ordinance to set a secondary dwelling unit, size limits, and exempt A D U provisions from Iowa Code three three one point three zero twenty-seven A one and other applicable sections, so A D U rules match primary dwellings in a county without building codes, add utility scale solar to public notification rules, and fix the telecommunication tower reference, remove mandatory tower colocation to confirm with Iowa law, correct the road use slash repair agreement reference for utility solar, and make other related housekeeping edits. And item C is the approval to schedule October seventh at four forty-five P M, October fourteenth at four forty-five P M, and October twenty-first at four forty-five P M for three public hearings for zoning ordinance text amendments to the Woodbury County zoning ordinance specifically to revise the land use summary table of allowed uses, section three point oh three point four, to classify public service garages as conditionally used within the agricultural preservation zoning district and/or agricultural states zoning district. And with that, that is the end of the consent agenda, and I will move that.
Second.
All right, motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero. With that, brings us to item number eight from Human Resources, Melissa Thomas, approval to discontinue benefit coverage for retirees and families sixty-five and older.
Good afternoon, Melissa Thomas. So as part of an ongoing effort to fight the rising cost of healthcare, you know, we've had to make some difficult decisions, you know, and after careful review, you know, the change being proposed here is to end current benefits for former employees over the age of sixty-five, and that would be effective twelve thirty-one of two thousand twenty-five. These benefits include dental vision and then partial pay of a Medicare supplement. Now H R will send out letters immediately, so people will, you know, know that this is happening at the end of the year. And then they'd also be offered Cobra for the dental and the vision insurance. So if they'd like to remain on until they figure out, you know, where else they would like to get that insurance, then we would allow that. So as it says in the agenda item, there's approximately fifty people on our plan over the age of sixty-five, and that's just the dental. So is there any questions?
How long have we offered this?
As long as I've been here, so, you know, I would say at least since two thousand eleven.
And the purpose you brought up, Melissa, is to help positively positively affect the medical fund, since we have been running a deficit in that.
Yes, and the dental is a self, comes out of our medical fund, it is a self-funded plan. So they do pay premiums, but we pay the tire benefit.
Right.
So that's where the savings would come in.
As it says in the back up here, is it just the seventy-eight hundred dollars a year that we'd be saving, or is there more to that, or?
Not on, the seventy-eight hundred dollars is what we would save on the supplement. I just thought if we are discontinuing the benefits, that it should be across the board. That supplement is for United Healthcare at twenty-five dollars a month. So then this would also give them time to either go get a new supplement or to remain as on United Healthcare.
Yeah, so it saves seventy-five thousand plus seventy-eight hundred.
Correct.
So closer to eighty-five, eighty-two, eighty-three thousand a year.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I guess everybody's taxes were due here, I'm sure we all got phone calls about people, you know, upset about what their property taxes were, I obviously had to pay mine too. And I think that my mission, and I think my colleagues share the same, is to try to keep our taxes affordable, and I think this is one way we can try to do that. We're not required to offer this, it is a pretty good chunk of money, so I think it is appropriate to do.
Yeah, I agree, Ryan. Because we, as being self-funded, we have to make sure we have a certain amount in our medical fund, if not, then there's other issues that would that would begin to fall into place if we weren't able to fund them.
Right, and there are retirees on there that are under the age of sixty-five, so those would remain. Just to, you know, let the public know. And when retirees under the age of sixty-five are on our healthcare plan, on the age of six, at the age of sixty-five, they are disqualified for that plan. So it aligns as well with our benefits for retirees on our healthcare plan.
All right, any other further, excuse me, board discussion? All right, hearing none, I would move to approval to discontinue benefit coverage for retirees and families sixty-five and older. All right, motion by Bittenger, second by Ong. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Melissa. Item number nine from County Sheriff's Office, Todd Peterson, it's the authorization to sign a five-year contract with Axon. And Ryan, do you have those copies? I'm going to move to receive a copy of the contract.
Oh, do you have one, Ryan?
Second. Yeah.
Do you have a copy of it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
You brought, okay. All right, motion by Bittenger, second by Dietrich to move to receive, all in favor say aye.
I brought it.
Aye. All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero, that one's for Michelle. Paperclip ones for Michelle.
Here we go.
Thanks, Ryan. We'll get that back. There we go. There we go.
You're welcome.
All right. All right, go ahead.
All right, Captain Peterson, Woodbury County Sheriff's Office. What we are requesting is the discussion and approval to sign a five-year contract with Axon. Currently, we have about a seven hundred and eighty thousand dollar credit, which that will go towards the payment for year two thousand twenty-five and two thousand twenty-six. We will not have a physical payment until November of two thousand twenty-seven. The basic obvious purpose for this is just to get the permission to sign the five-year contract. And within that contract, over the course of the next five years, we'll receive new tasers, new body cameras, and new in-car cameras, correct? Oh, and I think one additional drone? Two, two drones.
That's what I was just going to ask you, is, my guess would be we have a credit, or a contract with them right now?
Yes.
So would you want, for the benefit of the public, just explain everything, you kind of did a little bit there, but explain everything that the county or the sheriff's office gets out of this contract from Axon?
We have the body cameras, the tasers, which will be upgraded, the in-car cameras, which we just put in brand-new in-car cameras right now. Currently, we got brand-new cameras. Towards the end of the five-year contract, it'd be year two thousand twenty-nine, we would be receiving brand-new in-car cameras at that point in time as well. I don't know if there's any further detail that you want me to, and then we get the drone, well, we just incorporated the drones within this contract. And we're trading one in, getting a brand-new one, correct, and then one more?
One now, only one and two.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ryan, what's your thoughts on this, what's your analysis?
As Mark already pointed out, we are currently already under a contract. If we don't, you know, sign this one, then the services that will be discontinued. And I believe these are pretty essential for the sheriff's office to be able to provide the services safely, and this technology is needed in today's world. And we have discussed and looked at the contract, and they did offer a ten-year one, but they didn't give any, like, price breaks for it, so that's why we felt the five-year one. And yes, we will need to get this into the budget, but it'll be fiscal twenty-eight, fiscal year twenty-eight, we'll have to, you know, work it in, because the previous contract was paid with C I P and ARPA money. And most of this contract is more like software maintenance, and that's not really C I P qualified. So it'll have to be part of the operating budget in twenty-eight.
Yeah, so the credit that we have on account with them now would pay for the first two years of this contract.
Which, yeah, and each one of those, I think, was three hundred and sixty thousand each, somewhere around there.
Yep, three, three.
I don't have, oh, there they are. Yeah, and then the payment in two thousand twenty-seven in November would be four hundred and ten thousand.
Wouldn't doing a ten-year, would it make it, you know, to where they can't raise it after five years?
Well, I think, well, when they did the ten-year, they built in an increase.
They did, okay.
So it wasn't double the five-year, it was more like a hundred and twenty percent of the five-year. So, yeah, they are, they were already, you know, counting on inflation when they
Okay.
That's why I said with
Five years, it'd be that much, if they figure, oh, we need to start charging even more than what they quoted the ten-year one right now.
I believe it was four percent, Ryan, was that it?
I don't remember.
Four percent increments or something?
It depended on the area, because certain areas increased by more, and but it was more than double the, you know, the five-year contract.
I'll move it.
Second.
All right, motion by Ong, second by Nelson. All right, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, officers. Moving on to item number ten. Laura must still be waiting on information, we'll come back to Laura here. She was waiting on some delivery of some information for this agenda item. Let's move on to, from Board Administration, Ryan Erickson, item number eleven. Item A is to approve agreements related to community development block grant awarded to Woodbury County. And Ryan, I'll let you walk us through these four items.
Yeah, last week, we signed the contract with the Iowa Department of Economic Authority to do the C B D G grant with the Crittiten Center, but the county is the pass-through, so now what we need to do, as I said, that was step one of many steps, now we need to get a sub-recipient agreement with Crittiten, and then because of the complexity of it, we have an agreement with Simco to do the grant administration. And then one of the first steps, we have to get an environmental review requirement letter signed. And then the last item on this is a signature authorization to allow, right now, Daniel is the only one authorized to make any signatures on behalf of the county. So it was, I think it's best to add, you know, Mark, David, and myself onto it.
Okay, all right.
So those are the four items that
Sure.
are up for approval.
Right, yeah, and the grant administration agreement with Simco, just for the board's knowledge, receiving that six hundred thousand dollar pass-through grant, there's a lot of federal requirements, Ryan have, Ryan have sat down, looked at those. And so Simco will be that administrator of the grant, and their fee will come out of that six hundred thousand, and the Crittiten Center is agreeable to that. So this will not cost the county any money, but we were thankful to Simco to help, to be able to be that grant administrator and run the grant, make sure everything is fulfilled from federal, the federal mandates and whatever criteria they need to be done, is that correct, Ryan, if I'm speaking?
Yeah, they have a requirement that you have to be certified as a grant administrator, and, you know, there's nobody currently in the county that is certified, and they'd have to go through training, and it just was a lot, I think, better to have somebody like Simco, who is very knowledgeable to be able to do that.
Right.
And they actually agreed, initially it was a thirty thousand dollars, but they agreed to drop it to twenty-four.
Okay, right. Okay, all right, so with that, on number one, it's the, to approve, I'll move to approve the subsipient agreement with the Crittiten Center.
Second.
All right, motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion passes five zero. Item number two is approve the grant administration agreement with Simco, and that is the, they'll be the grant administrators, so I will move that.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Bittenger, second by Dietrich, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero. Item number three is I'll move to approve the acknowledgement of a, acknowledgement, excuse me, environmental review requirements. So I'll move that.
Second.
Motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero. And lastly, item four is I'll move to approve the signature authorization for alternate signatures.
Second.
All right, motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero. All right, on to item B, real allocation of fiscal year twenty-three C I P, and once again, Ryan, you have the floor.
There was one particular C I P that has been hanging around for a while, that was a sheriff's office Bearcat, and the reason being, it just takes us long for it to be ordered and manufactured and delivered. We have finally received the invoice for that, and the total of the invoice was four, three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars approximately. The, in twenty-three, there was two hundred and five thousand set aside as a C I P, and then there was a hundred and seven thousand ARPA money, so the total of those two was three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, which is about thirty-three thousand dollars short. There were, as we had just discussed, the cameras and tasers, there's a couple projects in the sheriff's office that are fully complete. So I would like to reallocate thirty-six thousand, I mean, thirty-two thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-seven cents from the, what is the Record Management Project to the Bearcat to have that fully funded. And then part two is in to, there are several projects that have been completed, and then reallocate the sheriff's office amount to thirty-four thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars to make, be made available for a new project within the courthouse.
Okay. All right. Seems pretty straightforward, any discussion from the board?
I'd move item one.
All right, motion by Nelson, I'll second it, second by Bittenger. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion passes five zero. And item B, I'll move that.
Second.
All right, motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero. All right, thank you, Ryan, for your work on that. All right, get back to item number ten, Secondary Roads, Laura Seavers. Item A is the approval of fiscal year two thousand twenty-six Woodbury County five-year program resolution one point one.
Hello. Yes, so when I was putting the program together for this year, that's a five-year program, I had removed a project that Mark had always had in there, and the purpose was, is the estimate had come in quite high, and it wasn't going to fit in our local roads budget, because this is a local project, it has no state or federal funds. As we went through the process, we tried to find things within the project that we could do ourselves, and tried to guess when a contractor might come in and do the work. It really determines how much a project can cost. And so the new estimate puts us near a million dollars, which is able to be budgeted in this year's Secondary Roads budget. And so I'm asking the board to sign a resolution that would allow that project to come back into my five-year program. And actually, the project is coming into what we call this year, which is the accomplishment year. If you'd like to know a little bit about the project, it's a bridge project called K twenty-three, it's over Rock Creek on one hundred and eightieth Street. It's a big bridge, and we're replacing it with an even bigger bridge. But, yeah, so the existing bridge is a hundred and four feet, twenty feet wide, and we're going to be putting in a hundred and fifty-foot bridge, thirty feet wide. It's one of those roads that it might not have a lot of traffic, but everyone who uses that road needs that bridge, because otherwise it is quite substantial out of distance. You're putting agricultural equipment on State Highway thirty-one, so I feel like it's a critical bridge to do, and I'd appreciate approval of this resolution to add it back into our program.
Yeah, I'll, I'd move to approve.
I'll second it. For this item, for item A and for item C, which is approve the plans for this, I'm going to abstain. This is the closest bridge to where I live. As she, as Laura stated, Mark Nara put this in the project five years ago, so it long predates my time on the board. But when we talk about the importance of this, earlier this year, Secondary Roads completed the bridge on Michigan Avenue, and the reason that that bridge was done was because this bridge is such a large project that it's going to be out of commission for a long time. And the Michigan Ave road was, had been closed since two thousand nineteen, and that's the next available cut-through road. But as Laura mentioned, one hundred and eightieth Street is the only gravel road that goes completely east to west from Anthan all the way to Old Twenty, which is about eight miles. And so while there's not a lot of commuter traffic, there's a lot of farm traffic from New Co-op in, in Cracker Vale or Nutronanthen that use their floaters or their fertilizer rigs to cross that. There's a lot of farmers that try to avoid highways with their equipment that try to go through there, and that bridge has been derated for several years, and they've had to find alternate routes, and I've had a lot of complaints about that bridge because of that. So I'll be abstaining on these two, but I think it's a great project, and it's, it's one that I know that many farmers will be very happy to have replaced.
Okay.
And it is a very big valley, I mean, it's just, it's a, and that, that little Rock Creek can flood, and so it'll be quite a project to watch, for sure, so.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
One moment, please. I believe you cannot second if you're abstaining, abstaining from A and B.
All right, motion by Bittenger, second by Ong, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Any extensions?
Aye.
All right, so motion passes four to zero with one abstention. All right, item B, approve, award, excuse me, award bids for propane for heating county buildings for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six.
Oh, would you like to accept the bids that the county engineer's office has received for the propane?
Yeah, I'll move to receive.
Second.
Motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Michelle, I'll give you my copy when I'm done, is that okay?
I can take one of their copies, we just need them to scan into the record.
Okay. So we, the engineer's office took bids for fifty-six thousand five hundred and twenty-five gallons of propane for this year. The, the propane is for the Secondary Roads Department, Emergency Services, Sheriff's Department, Conservation, and the Little Courthouse in Anthan. We had, let's see here, one, two, three, three bidders, so we have Johnson Propane of Battle Creek had a bid of one dollar and twenty-one cents per gallon for the propane, then we had Sapp Brothers of Sioux City at one dollar and eighteen cents and, I don't know, nine gallons. And then we had New Century F S at a dollar and nineteen cents and nine, for a total of, New Century's total was sixty-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty-eight cents. And the reason why I would ask the board to not accept the lowest bidder, but sec, take the second bid, is, is we did approach Sapp Brothers with the, I don't want to call it the, oh geez. The supply contract, and they wanted additional wording put in there that references some of the wording they must put in all their contracts, and that isn't something we've ever done before, and we didn't bid it with that type of contingency within the contract. And so I feel like either we need to rebid it or take the second bidder, since the second bidder was only a penny more. I feel like that is still a very reasonable bid price that we did get from New Century F S out of Ames, Iowa.
Okay, all right, discussion from the board, questions?
Yeah, it makes sense to me, I mean, it's only five hundred and sixty-five dollars difference, and it might cost more money to take the lowest bidder, so.
It would be my department that sees the biggest, we, we, we're about twenty-eight thousand, so we're about almost half of the gallons that are being requested, so that can fit in our budget. So again, I'd support that if the board would support taking the second bid.
I'd move it.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Bittenger, second by Dietrich, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero. And item C is approval of plans for project number L B K twenty-three seventy-three nine seven.
Right, so this is the bridge project that I just talked about, it's going to be a great project. What we usually see when we have these type of projects on pretty low-volume gravel roads is you put in a great bridge like this that can handle, you know, no restrict, no weight restriction, and then also pretty much no width restriction. It will become pretty much a very busy road, maybe some people do enjoy having the quieter roads, but we do really need to replace this bridge, and I support it. So I'm just looking for the plan set approval, and the board would each sign the front page of the plan set.
Okay. I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Bittenger, second by Dietrich, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, any extensions?
Aye.
All right, motion passes four zero with one abstention. All right. You said, Laura, you had to send your vote, board members? So we all need to sign the the front page, okay. That goes down to Michelle. Michelle, does he go down to, I mean, Michelle, Laura, does he go down to Michelle? Or does this need to go down to Michelle? All right, all right, with that, thank you, Laura, for your work on that. Moving on to item twelve, from Board Supervisors, Supervisor Ong, it's just an open letter regarding the path forward for the L E C mediation, and, okay, you have the floor, Matty.
Thank you. Well, the county and the authority obviously have a big date coming up with mediation, and there's been a lot of concern and talk and movement around who's going to represent each entity. It's kind of confusing to the public, and so it's tough for us to explain as a board why the most involved supervisor, Supervisor Nelson, would not be represented at mediation, regardless of how mediation is actually, how the mechanics work, all those things, it's important to this board. And I'm a relative outsider at this point to the process, but I saw the entities kind of moving of moving towards a position of a little bit of, you know, division creeping in the camp, so to speak. And that's not something we need when we go seek several million dollars. And so rather than go through these separate channels and, and have different attorneys, talk to different attorneys, I just thought, I'll just write an open letter and say, this is a path forward. This is, this is a maneuver we can do, and that's what it is. It's a political maneuver based on state laws constraints, where we would make sure that Mark Nelson does represent the taxpayer at mediation. The way that we would be doing that, and I'm not going to read the whole letter, you can read it if you'd like, it's going to be in the minutes, is that for a short time period surrounding the mediation, the Board could replace Mark Nelson with Dave Dietrich on, on the authority. And that would allow the Board to repres, to allow Mark Nelson to represent us and not have a quorum issue. Following that, I would be supportive, as I've said, whenever Mark says I want to get back on, if you ever, if you ever do. I think you will, but, you know, maybe don't tell Mr. Dietrich that just quite yet.
I haven't, I haven't had enough fun yet.
So you say, I haven't had enough fun yet, I'd like to go back on. I'll say, I'll motion that, and we'll make that switch again. We can make the switch without any sort of public hearing process. This is just an appointment of the Board, a four-fifths of the Board. Also, I thought this was also a good time to let the public know what I know the entities have been talking about and concerned about, and that is related to the membership on the LEC authority. I think that the city needs to make some public statements in regards to two things, whether or not they plan to support the at-large person, who's currently Ron Wick, for a new term after December 31st, and if they want to take Councilman Moore up on his offer to remain for another, to remain past his term of office at the end of this year. Because they have two decisions to make, I would think it would be prudent for us to hear that quickly. I don't, I would like to not force the Board of Supervisors to go on record and make comments of support or opposition for the at-large member if there is a willingness or a nonwillingness from the City Council to, to make a decision there, because that is a mutual appointment. Overall, though, I will say, I think it's important that, as the taxpayer understands this is a county project, by sheer force of numbers, we obviously did use the state mechanism to build this in the spirit of cooperation and collaboration. However, we've been footing the bills, by and large. So I would like to see some signal from the City Council on how they will approach that question, if they will in some way defer to the county and realize that we are doing everything we possibly can by funding all these experts and several different attorneys to represent us appropriately at mediation. That's the gist of it. I, I, I believe this already has some buy-in, and I'm happy to see that. Again, this is just something that we have to do, that we can do if we want to seek the desired outcome. And it, there's nothing more to it than that.
Yeah, a couple of things, Matthew, is that, reading the bylaws, Matthew's correct, this Board can appoint the county's appointee at any time. So next week, we could appoint Dave, and the next week, we could put me back on there if we, if we were so inclined, as long as it's a four-fifths vote, that's spelled out very plainly in the bylaws. And in regards to the at-large and Dan Moore, I'll comment on their terms, because this was talked about at the authority meeting last week. I don't think it was talked about here, but Dan Moore has roughly two years left. His term started over in, in, it was either October, November, two years ago, for a four-year term. So he will have another two years. And so as Matthew Supervisor Ung said, the City Council has a decision to make if they want him to still be their designee even after he's vacated his seat on the City Council. In regards to Ron Wick, he was serving a six-year term that is up December 31st. That term does not roll over. So it would take a, an active vote from the City Council and the Board of Supervisors, a four-fifths vote, to put him back on. If we were so inclined, and if we were not inclined, we would do nothing, and it would just roll off, and we'd obviously have to find a new candidate, so. And that is spelled out in the bylaws as well. So I appreciate Matthew's outside thinking on this. I think it, it solves most of the, the heartburn that's out in the community. I don't know what you guys would do if, if I wasn't on the authority, though. No, I'm just asking. But anyway, I, I would.
I don't know what we'd do if we didn't have a second member that lived outside of Sioux City, because our only other option is Mr. Dave Dietrich over there, so.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank him for living outside of Sioux City.
But thank you for penning this, Matthew.
Yeah, sure. And I think too, I'll say, I agree with Supervisor Ung, I think all of us, right, this is not a, an idea of creating, you know, disunity or anything like that. I mean, we think it needs to be clearly stated, the Board definitely works with the LEC, and I think that's, you know, what we, all of, all of us together believe that. So I just, I know some people will try to spin this, or take it in a different way, or light, or whatever, and maybe twist your words, Matthew, on that, but like, this is definitely, this is a, a unified, we're behind the LEC, we're together, and I agree. I think the five of us are, we want to go in as unified, but we also need to do what the constituents have asked. Mark and I have received calls, emails, and, and so, yeah, thank you for bringing this forward.
You're welcome.
Yep, so, anything else?
Yeah, speaking of twisted words, just real briefly, I do want to note some disappointment I have with a particular local media source. I understand this is a complex issue, but this is an open letter. It's not, it's not hidden anywhere. And I was disappointed to see that Alejandro Perez with KWIT, Sulan Public Media, reported that Mark Nelson was already appointed to mediation, that I didn't like it, and that I wanted somebody else. So I would just say, if, if a story is too complex for someone in local media, either A, don't write the story, B, seek clarification from the source, that didn't happen, or C, ask a colleague and say, this is a little too difficult for me to decipher, can you please write this story, help me understand this? That would be helpful, because this is complex enough as it is, I think we can all agree.
Yeah.
And this maneuver is something we have to do in order to effectuate the ends that we want.
Yeah.
And the ends that we want, just in that case, was the exact opposite of what was reported, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
I will take whatever heat I get for asking for the truth to be publicized.
All right, thank you, Matthew. All right, that was item number 12. Moving on to 13, reports on committees. And I'll, I'll go first. The Board of Health, just coming to the Board here in, in, over the next couple of months, is the renewal of our 2080 rental agreement with Sulan District Health regarding the building and the rental payment. So a couple of the Board members will be working with myself, and probably with Ryan, and with Mark, to look at a potential, like, look at that contract, and then it'll come before the Board just to approve another, you know, another cycle of that 2080 agreement. So just FYI. And then secondly, I had our ship meeting, Sulan Human Investment Partnership Meeting. I want to give a shout-out to Sioux City Boost Reentry. That is the program that's helping individuals that are incarcerated within, coming out of incarceration, or they're at RTF and they're about to be released, you know, off every probation, everything, and go out back into kind of, you could say, the real world, working on their own. And they help men and women, help them not relapse, get employable skills, get set up bank accounts, you know, apartments, all that stuff. Anyhow, the, the Iowa, Iowa report just came out here last month that said that the average recidivism rate in Iowa is 32.8%. But the Sioux City Boost Reentry Program, we're at 27% for here in Sulan. And they have 110 men involved in this program, men, sorry, men and women together. And so just really good to see a lot of, a lot of our Sioux City citizens getting the help they need, getting the job skill certifications to get employed. One really cool thing is one, one mom was being reunited with her kids and getting custody of her kids again, and got employed, got a job, and has actually just got promoted at Tyson, so. So just a good shout-out to Gary Fuentes at Sioux City Boost Reentry, so. That's all I have for reports. But anybody else?
Okay. Woodbury County Conservation, I, I'm the liaison for that, and if you were to go pick up a Sioux City Journal today, you'll see our great director, Dan Heisley, his mugshot is above the fold here on the front. But it's a great story. It's, it's, it's called Little Sioux, Big Changes, and it's about all the work that the Conservation Board and the Board of Supervisors have, have done out at Little Sioux Park. And so it's, it's, they, it's a very nice article about all the additions out there from the concession stand, to the boat rentals, to camper hookups, to the new road, the entry road that we paved. And so I think we, we talk about it at Conservation Board meetings, that we probably, that that group doesn't do a good enough job of tuning their own horn as far as the, the, the great things that they do. And so it was, it was a great write-up. October 18th is going to be trick or treat out at Little Sioux Park. That's a great, great event. Bring your kids, it's a very, it's a very, very fun event. Hopefully, the weather will cooperate like it has the last several years. So mark your calendar for that, October 18th, and, and hopefully get out, and you can still, our parks are still open, so if you want to still do some camping on some of these nice weekends, you still can do that. But thanks to all the folks out at Conservation for another good season and for all the, the work and planning that they do.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Anyone else? All right, all right, here and done, let's go on. Item 14, citizen concerns. Any citizens have a concern, please step to the mic and just state your name only, and whatever you want to address the Board with. You have three minutes. I see we have some young citizens in the, in the audience. If they want to come up and address, they are more than welcome.
Yeah, we need like little citizen concerns.
Little citizen concerns. All right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention that the city primary election is coming up, October 7th. The in-person absentee voting will start in the Auditor's Office tomorrow. So we're 20 days out from the election, and we'll start mailing requested ballots out tomorrow.
All right, thank you, Auditor Scott. Doing a good job. All right, any other citizen concerns?
Well, save the best for last, huh? My name's Dick Williams, and I own a property residential lot on the north side that is next to a vacant land owned by the county. My plan was to build a house assisted by an architect friend, but he died unexpectedly, so my plan ended, and I am now planning to sell the lot. There is a concrete, concrete retaining wall at the back of my lot separating it from land owned by the county. The county land has become overgrown by weeds, brush, and trees. I was told to contact Kenny Schmitz to clear up the weeds and so forth, but the phone number I was given goes right to voicemail. The example I have is on Wednesday, August 3rd, I called it at 8:36, 10:05, 12:32, 3:00, and 4:30. Everything went right to voicemail, never got any calls from Kenny. In the meantime, the county got busy trimming weeds and did a respectable job on the top of my concrete wall. But there was an area above my wall where there were several young trees that really needed removal along with other brush. I know a handyman, so I, I hired him. He did a super-good job cleaning things out. He dropped the debris at the foot of the wall. Since this debris came from county property, I expected the county to have it removed, but I was told they could not have county equipment going on my property. So to alleviate that problem, I had all the debris dragged to the front of my property within two to three feet of the public sidewalk, so it is now lying on public street right-of-way ground and can be easily dragged and carried to a truck at curbside. In one case, I took the initiative to do some work that needed to be done. I am providing a picture of the area of county property where the brush trees, et cetera, was removed from, and a picture of the brush to be hauled away. You can see from the picture that heavy equipment will not be needed. One person can throw it in a truck and not need to drive on my property. Hey, how's this for an idea? I have a birthday coming in two months, and will really appreciate having the brush removed as a special gift. But I will not let you guess my age. So I have two copies of this, I'll have to pass it along. This shows the wall where the debris was up above.
Motion received. Second.
And then it shows.
One second, Mr. Williams, motion.
Debris, yeah, up near the street.
Okay. Motion by Nelson, second by Benjer, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes five, zero. Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Williams, all right. All right, any other, any other citizen concerns? Thank you. Thank you. All right. See no other citizen concerns? All right, we'll move on to item number 15, Board Concerns. Do have one good update I think the Board's going to be potentially relieved about. I met with our Building Services Kenny, Kenny Schmidt this week over at the Tribe View Building regarding the county morgue, and it looks tentatively, Kenny, I don't want to speak, but if you want to come to the mic, but it looks like tentatively the morgue could facilitate the move there. And I've got some, some more, I've got the cooler specs to get to Kenny, I'll get those to you so you can review that to make sure everything looks like it could work, and so. But just tentatively, it might be able to move the morgue to the Tribe View Building and keep Veterans Affairs there, and we can split the building, so.
Yeah, Dan, after a meeting I met, or I contacted the Planning and Zoning, there are no zoning issues.
Okay.
Also contacted the City Inspections. Talked about what we're interested in doing. I do need the plans, or I do need the specifications.
Okay.
City Inspections needs to take a look at those.
Sure.
One thing I don't have, at least I have not been able to find, are any blue, blueprints for that facility or construction prints.
Okay.
City Inspections was looking for those. If I could, if, if I could get my hands some way on those, I could show them where we are planning for locations and what we are planning.
Okay.
But other than that, there, there are not appearing to be any large obstacles in the way as long as we can get through a inspection process with what we want to do there.
Okay. Thank you, Kenny, for your work on that.
Also, we did, I'm sorry, also did discuss and got some pricing. We mentioned some UV light filtering.
Yes.
That can be done, and I, I did get a price on those as well, so.
Okay, perfect, thank you for your work on that. Yeah, we've also, with that, we do move it over, we're looking at doing some upgrades of the HVAC to help with UV lighting, and just within the ductwork, airwork, to help purify the air and circulation. And there is two, two separate controllers there that split the building, so we could separate, zone it out, and so. So yeah, so I'll keep working with Kenny and bring that update to you guys, but it looks like we have a potential solution and a home for the morgue without costing the taxpayers any more money since we already own that building and are operating that building, so. Yep, that's all that I have for Board Updates right now, so.
I just want to compliment my daughters, Charlotte, age seven, and Madeline, age four, for being, having good manners and being nice and quiet, although they try to distract me with sending me heart signs and I love you signals. Daddy loves you too.
This Friday and Saturday in Anthan is the main found Midwest market. It's going to feature a lot of small businesses from right here at Woodbury County and the surrounding area. It runs from noon to seven on Friday, and then 10 to three on Saturday. Saturday is also Lawton's Volunteer Fire Department has their fundraiser breakfast in the morning, so if you're on your way to Anthan, stop in at Lawton, have breakfast, and then continue on your way. You can help a good cause and help small businesses on the same day. That sounds like a red-letter day, so hopefully the weather cooperates, helps everybody out. Thank you.
That's good. I just want to reiterate, Veterans Affairs is not moving. I just want to be clear, as the Chairman of this Board. I just want to be clear, as the chairman of this board. So if you're listening, thank you to all our veterans serving and Veterans Affairs. Stay in put, don't worry. Kenny and I, we got your back on this. All right. Just want to be clear to everyone out there. All righty. Anything else for the good of the cause?
So you're saying it's going to be in the bookmobile? Is that what you're saying?
Correct, Matthew. Yes, it's going to be. All right, thank you.